Hi.
Why?
Good. Uh, we are on the meeting. Uh, Zoom.
Okay.
Can you look at either your text or your email?
Uh, well, yeah, I can. Ah, very good. I don't want to talk about this now, but yes. Okay. Uh. I know we're on an open line, so.
Yes.
Hi, hello, folks. I'm just getting my clicks done and testing everything out.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Tony. Um, sounds like the microphone works okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Madam Chair, how are you this evening?
I'm good, you?
Hanging in. Uh, Mike. Mike, can you hear?
Yes, I can, Tony. I can hear you.
The gentleman that we were speaking with is aware.
Okay. Okay.
And the meeting hasn't started yet, but we do have, um, Robin here and Cheryl.
Hello, Robin and Cheryl.
I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, pause our video and mute ourselves until, um, are the rest of our members arrive.
Fine. Thank you.
Excellent. Oh, but I'm not gonna be, you know, I'm not gonna be. My video. Well, I'm sitting in at the school committee meeting. But they all seem to be stuck. I'm bothering up the channel. This is probably the next episode.
You are fine.
Hello, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order at 7:09.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any comments regarding the approval of the minutes dated December 30? Would someone like to make a motion to approve 10 minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minute on December 13th, 2022. And I'll approve the motion with them, Sam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the acknowledgement of visitors. Hello, everyone.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair. On, on the call tonight, we have Deborah Warren, Tony Parentozzi, Cheryl Delicio, Elizabeth Schindler, Heidi Fiore, Lydia Antrim, Madeline Fadera, Michael Long, Nancy Cagiano, Robin Howard, and Gail Billius. And Superintendent Parentozzi, could you give me a quick audio check? How's the school committee sound and how do I sound?
Uh, you sound very strong. The school committee, uh, sounds distant. And how about me?
You sound great. You sound very strong. And I'm trying to project my voice.
Okay.
Feel like I'm screaming and, uh, all the time. So moving on to correspondence and community input. Has anyone received any correspondence or community input?
I have not.
I have not.
No.
Nor I. Nor I. Would anyone like to speak that is on the call? Okay.
Hey, Madam Chair, I don't see anybody in the chat right now.
Okay, so we can move on to the examination and authorization for payment of bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we have a very small bill roll, uh, this month. The total is eighteen thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents. And they are all very typical, uh, costs. Nothing that, uh, jumps out, uh, at us. Um, the only thing I am concerned about is our national grid bill is forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is after LED, uh, conversion. So, um, not quite sure what to make of that, but I will continue to monitor that, that. I know personally, I received a notification that my purchase and do, and supply cost is going up on February 2nd seventy percent.
Seventy? Wow.
Seventy. I was paying point one zero nine per kilowatt hour for the supply, uh, using a company, a third party. And it's going up to seventeen four nine, point one seven four nine, which is in a, just about seventy percent. So, uh, and of course, we've all been on, uh, watching the news cognizant of, um, energy costs, so I'll keep my eye on that. I do want you, uh, to remind the school committee that, um, the town, uh, financial director and town administrator are both aware of the, um, potential for excessive increases in, um, uh, both, uh, gas and power. So we are, um, monitoring that. The only other item I have that I'd like to inform the school committee about is that, um, we, um, will be paying our second payment to Swamp Scott in the near future. So you'll see this, uh, the, the amount of, uh, this evening's, uh, bill roll will be dwarfed by that one, of course. So Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like, I'd respectfully ask a member of the school committee to, to make a motion to approve the expenditure of eighteen thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents for the, uh, the bill roll of January 10th, 2023.
Uh, Tony, the document that we have in front of us has a different total. It's seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents.
No, the bills are, um, for that.
So I'm, I'm not sure where the disconnect is because we have gone through all of the invoices. Um, and everything's been accounted for. What's, what's the difference in here? Is anything better now?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, respectfully, I apologize. I don't know why my numbers sprung. It may have been changed. Uh, but I didn't, I didn't get any communication that it was.
Okay, no worries.
So, uh, I think you, I think you should, uh, approve the number in front of you that has been verified. And then if there's something missing, then we'll simply put it into the next meeting, which is only, uh, two weeks. So it's, it's not a big delay.
Yeah, that's a great plan. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll and the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to your report.
Yeah, I can't, uh, that. That's eight hundred dollars. I wonder if, um, Madam Chair, does your bill roll have an eight hundred dollar payment to Sarah?
No.
No.
We should know.
It does not.
It does not. Okay, so that's the discrepancy. At least I know what it is. Um, I, I apologize. I, that's not familiar to me, so I'm not gonna make any comment about it.
Um, Superintendent Parentozzi, can I make a comment about that?
Absolutely.
Uh, so, uh, Sarah is, um, the Duane's is, uh, mother. Uh, her being, she did a reading workshop with us in, back in November. Uh, and it invoiced us. And I did ask Chris to see if that could get through, uh, tonight. And so that is for her, um, professional development session on guided reading.
Happy to add that to the. I'm looking because, um, so this afternoon, uh, Chris sent an updated packet. I'm just seeing if that's different than the one we have in front of us. That has a different amount.
Yeah, it does.
It does. Okay. So the one that we have in front of us. And so we don't have an invoice for the bill.
I have an invoice in the office.
Yeah, but I, I apologize. Oh, okay. It's the opposite. Okay. You can sign off on that and add it to the bill roll. It could be approved though, say, in addition to the, um, to the invoice, um, for services from Sarah Dwayne. And then, um, Mr. Andrews turned that, you know, over to us. Is that okay? Mr. Parentozzi, is that what you do?
Absolutely. Uh, I think if I may, Madam Chair, uh, the simplest way would be for a member of the committee to make a motion to approve eight hundred dollars to Sarah Lac Courcir, and that's L.A.C.O.U.R.C.I.E.R.E. Pending the submission of an appropriate, um, invoice and approval by, uh, of the invoice by the superintendent.
I'll make a motion to approve eight hundred and eight hundred dollar bill to be paid to Sarah Lucas Dear. Uh, pending, uh, the invoice, um, being collected today.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Rich.
And thank you for the detail on that.
My pleasure.
So Madam Chair, would you like me to move forward on the, with the superintendent's report?
Please, yes.
Okay, so, um, the first item is the, uh, leak that we, uh, what happened is, um, excuse me, I apologize. First item is COVID-19 update. Um, as all of you know, because you received them, test kits were sent home for use on, um, last Monday. We got no input from any parent than any child or family member tested positive. Now, obviously, that doesn't mean that didn't happen. Um, but the, uh, public health nurse indicates, uh, as of today, that there's one or two cases in town. There's not a lot of, uh, COVID around, uh, which is great. And, uh, in, in our town, anyway, and that, um, we did send a letter home because of a preschool case. Uh, the individual who tested positive in our preschool program, uh, after discussion with, um, our school nurse, it was determined that, uh, it was probably not school transmitted. Obviously, because of the, uh, lack of, uh, follow-up that isn't done anymore, uh, I kinda couched that with probably. Uh, but, uh, by every indication, it was transmitted outside the school environment. Uh, so we continue to utilize, um, Cheryl's, uh, expertise and the, uh, public health nurses' expertise and take tip, typical communicable disease and flu protocols.
Thank you, Cheryl. That's great.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, moving forward, the LED project phase two is basically completed. We have, um, notified the, uh, installer that two fixtures don't seem to be working, uh, the way we want them to into, you know, one, one fixture in two different rooms. And there is still some programming to do, but, uh, other than that, everything is done.
Excellent.
And Madam Chair. Any, any question or comment about the project?
No, it's great, thank you.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think the way the power, uh, cost is going, even though we have LED in all of our lights now, I think we're still gonna see, uh. An increase. In our, uh, electric bills. Uh, although. No doubt, a smaller increase than we would have seen without the last two years LED conversion projects.
I was just gonna say, if we hadn't made these changes, imagine what the bills would be.
Yeah.
Somebody will look at it.
Yeah, exactly. So, on to the principal's report.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before you, you have a small packet, um, that includes some attachments and, uh, my report. Uh, starting off with, uh, teaching and learning. Uh, I'm happy to let you know that we have Northeastern University coming back to, uh, work with our students. Uh, starting on January twenty-third through February third. Again, uh, this is at no cost to the school, thanks to Superintendent Parentozzi's negotiation with Northeastern some time ago. Uh, and the value was around six to seven thousand dollars per year, I'd say. Uh, with each class receiving two to three classes per year. Including the preschool.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, it's a wonderful, uh, relationship that we have with Northeastern University. And this is, um, on top of the annual gift that they give to the school, uh, to support the school. So those will start on January twenty-third. Um, typically a start to the start of the school year, but they were still, uh, climbing out of their COVID. Um. Difficulties and their own processes at the university for working with outside groups. And I wanna say that I really appreciate, uh, Gabrielle Redamacher's work on this. She is our fifth grade, uh, sixth grade science teacher and also our coordinator, uh, for the marine science programming.
Right.
Yep.
Question, Mr. Andrews.
Please.
How much is the annual gift for Northeastern?
Uh, it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
And, um, how long? Um, the rookie year, um, how long have they been giving the gift?
I'd say, uh, definitely longer than seven years and probably.
Ten.
Ten, yeah, I was gonna say ten.
And has it always been twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could explain, I think initially, the, um, the gift to the school district was targeted at re-establishing. Um, special subject teaching. Because there was a time, um, when. The budget did not support them. Uh, subsequent to that, um, since, uh, uh, I arrived, and we have bolstered the budget. Through support by the taxpayers, town administration, and of course, uh, the school committee members. Uh, we have been able to adjust the use of that money. Uh, and use it as an unfettered gift.
That's wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Moving on to the, um, school improvement plan point that I have here. Uh, I wanna let you know that the school council has a meeting, it's made up of, uh, Patricia, uh, Sheehan. Nancy Antrim is the, uh, is the community representative. Uh, Madeline Fidero is also there as a teacher. And I'm, of course, on the school council as well, and we meet quarterly. Today, we looked at our draft of the school improvement plan. And we have a few focus areas this year. One is, uh, the music program. In terms of curriculum and, and teaching, looking at how to keep that strong. Uh, also, we're looking at how to improve ELA, loose language arts. And health and wellness. And this, um, covers individual student health and wellness. And then the, all be, also the wellness of the greater community through, uh, equity and inclusion. So, um, there's a lot of detail in there, and I'll be giving that to you, uh, in May. At your main meeting. And I wanna thank the members of the school council, um, who have been meeting to, to look at these areas for improvement and giving a valuable feedback. On how we can, uh, you know, always improve the school.
Yes.
In your packet, you have a sheet about the professional development day. We have a lot of topics to talk about for that. Uh, I'll highlight a few of them. We're gonna be having a workshop from the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. Uh, again, that's a, a connection that, uh, has been bolstered by Superintendent Parentozzi as the, uh, chair or the president, the president of, uh, M P Y. And they're going to be doing a, a wonderful talk about creating an anti-racist classroom. I've invited the Swamp Scott teachers and educators to join us.
That's great.
And I'm also gonna send it out to parents. Um, it's gonna be on Zoom. Um, and we have a wonderful speaker that I've heard great things about. And, uh, it's a timely topic, uh, and one that I think all schools need to, um, to look at. So I'm glad to have that, that'll be an hour and a half long, I'm sure with question and answers and, uh, interaction.
Is that the time?
That's gonna be at ten o'clock on Friday.
Okay.
And I'll be sending the invitation out to the, uh, parents tomorrow. We also have, uh, an introduction to our workshops on inspiring change. Um, and that's our week-long, uh, two-week-long, really, event with, uh, Tice de Blish, uh, an artist. Uh, so we'll have an introduction on that, we'll meet him online, he's down in Atlanta working for some clients, but he's gonna zoom in with us. Say hello and talk about what the next, the following week will look like. And, um, and we'll also have a kickoff of the garden volunteer program. Uh, it's really helpful to have volunteers in the school that, uh, aren't parents, because you get a whole other demographic. And you get to connect with other members of the community who don't know about the school. And so we have, uh, I'm pleased to say we have ten volunteers who have signed up to do two to three lessons. They're each assigned to one classroom, so they're gonna be that classroom teacher, that classroom's garden volunteer. Uh, I'm gonna train them on Friday. Uh, then I'll have another training date with them as well. Um, helping to create great, appropriate lessons. Uh, when we do gardening outside with the kids, we divide the kids into three groups, uh, because you can't garden with twenty kids at once. Um, and so they rotate through, so it's helpful to have the volunteers, and they're looking forward to being part of it. Um. Next on the agenda that I have on the list here is, uh, inspiring change initiative. In your packet, I gave you, uh, a list of events that are happening. Um, under, to get us ready for the inspiring change week. So as I mentioned, uh, on Friday, uh, Tice will be, uh, meeting with the teachers. We'll also have a preview for the class teachers on the P V D Essex field trip. Uh, that'll be for grades three to six, so the teachers will see video, uh, talk about the, the sites they'll see at the P V D Essex. To get ready for the field trip, that's the, um, that week. On Wednesday, uh, Tice is coming for what we're calling a TED Talk. It's gonna be the whole school in the cafeteria, he kicks it off. He introduces himself, uh, talks about his work. Uh, talks a little bit about climate change and how we can have a positive impact on the planet. And then, uh, students group break out into small groups according to class. Facilitated by the class teacher, discussing what kind of murals we could create in the building. To talk about how to inspire people to make a positive change in their world. Uh, and so that's, that's the Wednesday kind of kickoff to the following week. Then Thursday, we have the field trip for the grades three to six. Students come back from the field trip and meet with Tice again to work on their themes. And then on Friday, the older students get, I mean, the younger students get to work with Tice in a smaller group setting to prepare for the week. So this is all. Planning for the week they'll come after this, when Tice is here for the solid week, um, for six hours a day. Working with our students in, uh, groups, um, eight to twenty. Um, on different areas in the building, uh, installing murals. Around the theme of inspiring change. So we're really looking forward to that, and I, I wanna say, uh, a very. Heartfelt thank you to the Nahyan Education Foundation for supporting this, and, uh, the parents that'll be volunteering, uh, to make it work.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. It's great. Um, under the area of community enrichment, I did already mention the garden, garden volunteer program, that's our current outreach effort to the community. I also wanna let you know about an after-school enrichment program that we have launching. Uh, we have a significant COVID nineteen grant. Uh, and it's allowed Riley Edmonds, our school adjustment counselor, to become full-time. And she is asking teachers and, uh, community members to teach workshops after school. The idea is that we wanna work with students after school in a creative environment where we can address mental health issues. Uh, it's going to be looking to, you know, help students. Positive interactions with each other during art workshops, music workshops. The P T O is also contributing to this, they're gonna be adding, uh, woodworking workshop. Uh, we'll have yoga fitness, uh, it's all gonna be no cost. And, um, it's really gonna be top-notch, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what we do, we wanna really have like a one-to-ten ratio. Uh, from teacher to student, so that we have that, um. That close connection that you need to do this type of work.
Excellent. So is it gonna be one program? For all of these, or are they each gonna be?
It's gonna be a menu of, um, of classes that you can pick from, much like enrichment block that we had in years past. That was coordinated by P T O. I, I do think it's gonna be a little bit more to it than that, because you do have. Uh, additional funding to get the sizes right, and it's being led by a counselor. And the idea, and Cheryl Delisio, I should say, our ner, school nurse.
That's great.
Um, so, uh, and Superintendent Parentozzi as well. They've been, they've met and to go over what this will look like. Um, for the staff, the goal is to support mental health and wellness. Uh, for the students, it is to, you know, be in a positive environment where they can express themselves. So we're not, we're not selling it as, um, mental health and wellness program, we're selling it as, you know, enrichment, art, creative, music. Uh, no cost, but we know it's gonna have a good impact on the students', uh, well-being.
Specific grades?
Uh, well, we are looking at K to six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we are looking at dividing it, uh, according to age group. So that, you know, students can, uh, interact, you know, nicely with each other and that the numbers are small. I'll also let you know that, uh, Tice de Blish is also looking to join this.
Wow.
And he, I'm asking him to, more specifically, work with the great students in grades five and six, they typically have. Uh, an, a drama program. And he has a, a background in performance art. And so I'm thinking that he could do some, he's thinking about making a video, um, having the students meet on Lodge Park. And tying it into this inspir, inspiring change.
They would love that, I think.
Yeah, I think they would see all over the.
I think so, and they would be probably good at it, too.
Yeah.
You know, putting video with, um, audio, they could capture audio of young kids. Layer it on top of kids running outside, add music as a layer. And, um, and so I, I do think that's a little bit of a, a different concept, and I, you know, to see it be successful. And knowing the sixth graders and the fifth graders, thinking that might be a nice topic group, but I wanna see if I can get them a hundred percent sign up.
Yeah.
You know, and have it, it has, have a kind of a culminating activity for that class.
Sounds great.
Wow.
Say the words YouTube, and you'll be.
Yeah.
I'll throw on Instagram, too, it's your hobby, dude.
And, um, Mr. Andrews, is this music program different from the music, uh, band program?
Yes, so, um, Scott Bullock, uh, our band teacher, will be doing, uh, instruments on Tuesdays. Um, we're looking to have, um. Mr. De Blish work on Thursdays, and so music would be a different day.
Okay.
Uh, after-school music would probably be a Wednesday or, or a Monday.
Okay.
And any idea in terms of the timeframe for launching this?
Uh, well, we'd like to get it going in February. Uh, Ms. Edmonds was just about ready to launch it when we learned about the opportunity to collaborate more with the P T O. Uh, because they were just about ready to kick off their initiative in the same realm, and so we wanna, you know. We wanna make sure we work together, so that we have enough students, that we have interest, and then we have space, and spaces. Do these types of things.
Great.
And then down below, I have upcoming events, um, tomorrow night is our band information night for grades, uh, four to six, students and, and parents are welcome, if you can't make it. Can get in touch with Mr. Bullock, otherwise, that's at six P M, it was on a newsletter, and I'll try to send it back out again tomorrow. Um. And then, of course, Friday is a full day of professional development of school. Uh, Monday, we have a holiday for Martin Luther King Day. And then you see other events that I've mentioned.
How about the summer learning?
Yes, um, I do have draft, that was another, uh, one of the items, and, um. So for summer, summer learning opportunities, I've been working closely with Island Roots. They're looking to have seven weeks. Of programming. Starting the week of July tenth. Uh, I have a summary of this that I can give you, it's a draft. Um, so they're looking for seven weeks, they like to run programming from nine A M to five P M. Um, they're gonna give Nahyan two weeks head start to sign up for all the programming that's gonna be here. And we're gonna open, they also wanna open it to. Other towns. Um, for their camp, to make it, uh, so that they can have enough students to, um, to support the program.
And they would have the program here in Nahyan?
Yes.
And they would bring other towns' children into Nahyan?
Uh, parents would bring the students here.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
They wanna.
That would be space, uh, providing that there is space.
Right.
No, no Nahyan child will be displaced by a, a student from another town.
Okay. Um. Uh, can I say a couple things, look after the Island Roots summer program? That's right, um, just an idea, I think that it might be a great thing, I, I was surprised that there wasn't like an evaluation or a, um. Feedback form sent out to parents last year. I would strongly urge, uh, either Johnson or Edmonds to do that. Um, with both some like Likert scale and open-ended questions, so that parents can give input on the experience last year. And potential, you know, kind of, don't ever lose this thing that we did that was so awesome, and here are some suggestions. You know, or thoughts on future things I'd like to see. Um, from my vantage point as a parent in the program. Um, for a couple of years now, I think that. There's a gem of a thing here that could be even better. With some not-too-hard moves. And so I think to elicit feedback from many would be a, a great thing to invest in. The hunt residents. But also, um, get some ideas to make it even stronger, a program.
I'd be happy to, uh, work with, um, Dassie on that.
Great, great.
Um. The, um, the Johnson School Summer Enrichment Program, uh, will be Monday through Thursday. And that'll be starting the week of July tenth. And ending the week of July thirty-first. So it's a four-week program, Monday through Thursday, uh, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. That's a no-cost, uh, summer academic enrichment. It's, uh, it's also grant-funded. And so, uh, students would be able to attend the, uh, Johnson School Summer Enrichment Program. From eight-thirty to eleven, Monday through Thursday, and the idea is that they might want to join the Island Roots program after that. And Island Roots is adding, uh, a full day on Friday as well. Uh, so for parents looking for five days. And Island Roots is thinking to go from nine A M to five P M.
And Mr. Andrews, um, for the Johnson School Summer Enrichment Program. These, this program would be open to incoming. Grades?
Um. Let me get back to you.
Yes.
Let me get back to you on that. Um, it, I, I can say. It won't, it won't be open, I don't expect it to be open to rising kindergarteners.
Okay.
Um. I, I think that's still the, the best, um, approach with. Camp and with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, or exiting sixth graders.
Um, that's a different question.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a different question. Uh, you know, my feeling is that, uh, preschoolers, you know, I'd like to have them have their first school formal experience. And in level independence and staffing ratio correct. Um, with us as kindergarteners.
Yeah.
Preschool is just such a different, uh, thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, knowing from experience. Um, so, and the ratios, I, I think are important to have high ratios, starting high ratios with preschoolers. And, um, you know, exiting kindergarteners can feel a little bit more independent.
Sixth graders.
It, oh, I mean, I'm not worried about exiting kindergarteners, and sixth graders can be fantastic. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
And, um, just to clarify. The Nahyan residents versus non-residents enrolling, it sounds like the first two weeks. Will be only open to Nahyan residents, after that, it'll be open to people outside of the Nahyan community. Uh, until it fills. But say, for example, if it fills, because it's been open to people outside of the Nahyan, a Nahyan resident wouldn't be able to then displace somebody else.
Um, that sounds like that would be right.
Only those first two weeks, it's going to be.
They're looking at February fifteenth to March first.
Yeah.
Um, for onboarding from the high residents.
And then that one, uh, um, so will the Johnson camp also?
And then that one, uh um so will the Johnson camp also be um advertised because there is that right? Some people, particularly people from outside of the Nahat community, might do a full day, Monday through Friday of Island Roots. Whereas in the weeks that the Johnson School is available, there will be a prorated amount that you would pay for going to the Johnson School Camp.
Right, right. So, right, so essentially, Nahat and Nahat student that starts eleven thirty to five is taking a slot.
Yes.
The full day is using up a full day slot almost, and that's correct. And they'll have prorated.
Yes, but the signups for the Johnson School Camp is also gonna be in February?
Oh, yes, yeah, we're um working closely to Jesse to try to have a to to, yes, to either have it on the same registration form with Island Roots, that might feel tricky. Um but definitely the same time so that the messaging is clear and everybody knows what they're signing up for and not signing up for.
Sorry, what was the date that I signed up sort of?
February fifteenth to March first. Just the Nahat early registration period.
Yes.
And you think that aligns with other camp signup periods?
They're already out there.
They're already, you mentioned it, yeah. We we, I I will say.
It's free to here, so it's really good.
Yeah, we and we have been working closely with Island Roots to ask them to, you know, share what they have and let us know. Um you know, we know what we're gonna offer, so. I mean, I could start a signup tomorrow, but I I think it makes most sense to do it hand in glove with them where we're not gonna fill.
Yes, and I I think February to March is appropriate. I think most um camps. You know, they start to fill up in like March or people start thinking about that or, but for those who don't think about it right now.
Sure.
Yeah. And Mr. Andrews, just as a reminder, thinking about Friday, when there's no school, there's no Island Roots, right?
Oh, this Friday?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's correct.
Is that true? Yeah.
That's correct.
This is all right for parents.
I think, so I saw an email.
Okay.
You could have sign on roots. They have an email that I think that they have some no school days that are in the session, but I don't know.
They, they definitely have them in um.
Marvel.
Like they offered like, you can often go to Tyconda, Tyconda Way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The yoga way.
Yes.
But probably not this day, probably not in a hot day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, good to know.
Thank you. So we have finished all the questions with the principals report, we can move back to the uh facilities update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh if I, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would like to make a comment or two about the last discussion about the summer program. Um. The, I think it's imperative for us to get the word out to our parents and guardians to sign up. Because the only way I can see if a, that a Nahat student resident would not have a space when someone outside the community did is if the Nahat student signed up late. And or or a parent changed their mind about weeks or something like that. So we don't want that to happen. Because that will be frustrating for everyone. Um so we'll make sure that we have all of the communications very clear. Secondly, I want the members of the school committee to know that um Mr. Andrews primarily and myself, we have been uh interfacing and commun- communicating with Island Roots um since the beginning of December. Trying to push the date as early as possible because I remember last year um we had a this, you know, we had a December, early January target. And uh we we are aware of how important it is to get it out there. Uh but obviously, we can't force uh another entity to make decisions earlier than they are comfortable doing so. Um. And we're really excited about all of the programs that we are reinstituting, you know, kinda getting back to where we were in two thousand twenty. And it's a, it's really gonna be fun.
Fantastic.
Thank you. So uh the first thing on the uh facility was the uh heating system leak. I'm gonna start very positively. Um. No class was negatively impacted and it really was a team effort. Uh as many of you know, I was on the West Coast when this happened. And uh obviously, I was connected by uh text cell and uh email. But uh I had to rely on other people. Uh Vinnie Gagliolo, uh our uh head custodian did an outstanding job as did James. Um. On staying in touch with me and making sure that we had all of the um the issues that arose during um this very quick uh demolition, uh inspection and rebuild process, uh we made sure or that everything was uh done in an appropriate way so that uh MIA insurance, which is the public insurance uh would be satisfied and would cover uh the the damages. Um. I also wanna thank Surfro who jumped right on it. They are a professional emergency management team. They uh really handle a lot of the details. They came in, they demoed, they had their certified uh health and environmental quality inspectors come in and check everything out. Um. Um Amanti Plumbing came in and fixed the leak, obviously. Uh the leak was in a valve in room two twelve, which actually is a storage room. And uh it had nothing to do with the cold. It was the valve just broke loose. And initially, uh the valve um sprayed the liquid around the room and then eventually it began to leak faster and it went downstairs. So the team effort really resulted in um minimal impact other than obviously a lot of hours of work by a lot of people. I also wanna thank Kristen Taylor at Town Hall for being our go-to person in terms of the insurance claim. And of course, Kevin uh was around more than I was. And uh it really was um for what happened, uh it was about as as good a result as we could have hoped.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Thank you, everybody. Speedy response.
Naturally, it happened over a long weekend, which made it worse, right? Always. So uh the the next item, Madam Chair, is the telephone system. We now have new telephones. Um. However, we need to have a professionally programmed server. We we bought a server so that it would be here when the phones were changed. But then um nobody mentioned that it had to be sent out to be programmed, which is, it's, I believe it's happening now, right, Kevin?
Yes, that's right. It was uh picked up today by uh Treecom.
Wonderful. So uh before long, we will have the uh full complement of um services. Uh the telephones will be a a real uh improvement for our staff and our communications, including with our uh parents and guardians and community members. Uh and it was long overdue. The phones we, the system we had was of actually, it was installed in two thousand seven. It was probably purchased and or designed before that, so it was uh it was really an antique. A second part of good news on this phone system is I knew we were going to need it. So I encumbered unused funds from the fiscal twenty-two budget, which will cover all of these costs.
Great.
That's awesome.
Fabulous.
Yep. Okay. Now, not so good news. The cafeteria rooftop unit, if you remember, we've been having problems with that. Once again, it's quite old. Um iron, our uh HVAC company believes that it can't be repaired. So today, at about three o'clock, I got an estimate from them for the replacement. It's uh, hang on.
We're sitting. We're all sitting.
Fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars if we give them eight weeks notice. If we give them three weeks notice, it's an additional five thousand dollars. So I'm not comfortable with that. So this afternoon, when I got the uh estimate, uh I did um, I went searching for alternatives. So I I went on to uh Conbuys. And I found thirty-eight companies that provided state-approved services in HVAC. Ten of them are within about twenty miles of us. So what I will be doing um Thursday is sending out um an official request for either a repair or a replacement from these ten companies. Hoping that um the cost would be less. Um I I'm not sure, I'm not confident, I have no idea. Everybody knows what's happening in the in the supply chain and in the marketplace. So what I decided to do is we purchased six safe space heaters. Now, we do have heat in the cafeteria. On the Castle roadside of the cafeteria, there's an unbroken radiator on the entire wall. Uh it's not enough to keep the room warm on a very, very cold day. But for example, this week um Vinnie has been monitoring it for me and it's been between sixty-seven and sixty uh eight degrees, excuse me, sixty-six and sixty-eight degrees. Which is a little bit chilly, but not so bad for a room where no one really stays for very long. The kitchen has heat, the kitchen has a different kind of heater. And there's also a heater uh in the um ramp, at the bottom of the ramp that we have fans blowing hot air uh into the cafeteria. Uh as of today, those heaters are, haven't arrived, but they should be coming in this week.
They uh actually arrived today, Superintendent Parentozzi.
Great. And uh just to be safe, what I also uh authorize was a circuit-breaking um extension cord for each heater. So that we're not overwhelming the electrical system. These, um I'm sure you've seen these. These are the black box heaters that the outside of the unit never gets hot, so no child can get burned. And they are um, they have multiple levels of of electric. So that we, you know, we'll be um, we'll be setting them up probably tomorrow. And we will be uh trial and error to see uh how we can limp through.
Great. It's the best we can do right now.
Yeah, as I said, even without the heaters, uh you know, in in temporary weather like we've been having, uh it's okay. But you know, if it gets cold, we need, we need uh supplemental heat in there.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I'll go right into the personnel update, if I may?
Please.
Okay, lots of stuff. First of all, our Coda, that's a Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant, is finishing up a a degree and um our Coda needs to take uh January, the end of January through March off to do uh graduate work. We have contracted with Kid Shine. That's an occupational therapy and other special education service. And we have used them before, I think, two summers ago and last summer. And uh we know of them and we know uh them very well, and they are very well um able to provide the occupational therapy services until our Coda returns. Um. She will be finishing up her her graduate degree, so uh I'm not quite sure what next year will look like, but we'll address that when we need to.
Great.
Uh recently, we have hired a full-time paraprofessional. And I forwarded you her her redacted resume. Uh for the next two weeks, Ms. Amato will be our special education teacher. She uh is an elementary education and special education minor of and just finished up her undergraduate degree. She's not licensed simply because her transcripts haven't been finalized. Uh but as a substitute, she's fine. Uh. And when our special education teacher starts, she will be a full-time paraprofessional uh and Mr. Andrews will determine where she is assigned.
Fabulous.
Our special education teacher, as you know, our special education teacher resigned without notice um late in December. So we've been in a um scramble mode in terms of getting a replacement. Uh I do wanna thank um Mary DiGuardia, who chaired the i- interview team and also the members of the community and parents who's served on the team. We had three applicants. Only one had the necessary license. The, oh. So as superintendent, my options were limited. First of all, it's my obligation, particularly in special education, to always provide both a qualified and a licensed educator. We had one applicant who met both of those uh criteria. Um I was not involved with the interview process, nor was Mr. Andrews. Um Mary and the team um interviewed um Mary did the reference checks and um late last week, I got a recommendation for hire. The individual is uh Janice K. Wallwood. Janice is the significant partner of Mr. Andrews. Um as soon as I knew she would be in the pool, uh I made sure that Mr. Andrews was not involved with the hiring process. The.
I'm sorry, Mr. Parentozzi, would she not in his recording um the chain of command?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, um she would not be uh her supervisor.
Yes, I'm getting to that, exactly. Um I checked it with the ethics uh guidelines. There's no prohibition, really. Uh but it it, it would be best for all parties. And uh this individual, regardless of who they were, the primary and supervising evaluator would be the director of special education anyway. Um however, some staff members have been communicating some concerns to me. And I do wanna address them. Uh number one, there is no ethical violation for a spouse to work in the same building as um their partner um who is a, who is the principal or the assistant principal or a director. um, who is a, who is the principal, or the assistant principal, or a director, uh, as long as that individual is not evaluated, and decisions about their employment are made by someone else. In this case, those decisions would be made by the director of special education and the superintendent. Now, the, the obvious concern by some staff members is, well, how about the chain of command? Mary's not in the building all the time, neither am I. Well, the good news is, because we live in a technological age, if there were any issues with this individual that were concerning, or this individual had questions that needed to be answered, then obviously, as you all know, I'm available all the time electronically, uh, to address it. So I was very comfortable offering Ms., uh, Walwood a contract um, for, for a variety of reasons. Number one, I'm not sure I had it, uh, I'm not sure I had it, any options. Previously, if you remember, in the summer, we had no applicants for a special education vacancy, which came, um, which became vacant, uh, right around the end of Ju- July. So we actually had to recruit a teacher who was unlicensed. I had to apply for and get an emergency license. Now, that process was not easy. Uh, there were many questions I had to ask, answer, rather, and even after I answered them, the, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education licensure department asked me more questions. I don't believe that we would be able to get an emergency license for a special education teacher if we had a special education teacher who was licensed, who, excuse me, is licensed, in the applicant pool. The DESE would say to, to me, why didn't you hire them? And if I said, as an example, well, I was a little bit uncomfortable because this person is related to the principal, the answer would be, there's no, that's not prohibited, why didn't you do it? So that's where we are. Uh, I'm very pleased, I, I, uh, sent you a redacted resume, and you can see that, uh, Ms. Walwood is licensed in both elementary, one-sixth, and special needs, pre-K nine. She's also trained as a Wilson reading teacher, which is something we need for the, uh, to meet our IEP requirements. And, um, I'm simply announcing to you and the community this tonight, so that no one is surprised to find out that, uh, Ms. Walwood and Mr. Andrews are related. It's always better to have it transparent upfront.
Of course, yes. Thanks for providing all the information, it's helpful.
You're very welcome. Uh, I also have to tell you that our STEM teacher will require a substitute, uh, at some point in the next few weeks to the end of the school year, uh, due to a leave of absence that the STEM teacher is taking. We have already replaced that person, uh, with a substitute who has been working with, uh, Mr. Andrews and myself. And it's my understanding that Mr. Bullock will also be taking over the music program, the teaching program, one day a week. Um, that, that trans- transition has not been confirmed nor completed, but it's my understanding. And Mr. Bullock, um, uh, you don't have his resume, but I will make sure you get it. He's, he's also a professional musician who plays many instruments, and, um, we are re- really thrilled to, to have him interested in working, uh, at the Johnson Elementary School.
Superintendent Parentozzi, I'm not sure if you're aware, he was also certified in a, in a music teacher in Medford.
That, that is correct, I do remember that, and for quite a few, like, nineteen years?
Uh, I'm not sure quite how long, but I know he had a Massachusetts certification for music, and, uh, he was a band director there as well.
Right.
Right, that's the, uh, that's the expectation.
So is the music-
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, he left, he left education, became, and he was a, uh, and is still is a professional musician, correct?
That's right, he's a, yes, he's a professional musician.
So, um, he will add a tremendous amount to the depth, uh, the number of instruments, the type of musical instruction that we can give. And we're really happy about that.
Um, can you say more about, I wasn't aware of the music teachers, maybe, I might have missed something. Um, the woman who ran the-
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Hanson, she's done a wonderful job.
Yeah.
Um, she's a choral music teacher. Um, she doesn't play instruments, or, um, she reads music and sings.
Yep.
And, um, she's decided to leave the position.
Okay.
And, um, she's in Ahon resident.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, Mr. Bullock had, Mr. Bullock had actually applied while the position was still just hanging out there posted.
Yep.
Um, and so that's why it overlaps.
And he'll do it in a week for each grade? He's not very well-
The classes, yes, he'll, he would do a regular, he'll have the regular music classes on Friday, and then on Tuesday, he'll do band and, uh, instrumental band.
Okay.
And so he'll be able to teach recorder to third grade during their music class, which was not possible with Ms. Hanson, she says an example.
Um, he's teaching recorder to third grade?
He will be doing general music.
Okay. Is the, my, a, a first-grade scholar told me that he's going to be taking recorder lessons, that's not, that's not-
Um, well, you know, um, I have to say, Mr. Bullock is very, um, very eager to get started and enthusiastic. So, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised. Um, I do know that Mr. Bullock's interested in, in introducing instruments to, um, grades K to six. Uh, we have many xylophones that we've never used, that are really beautiful. Uh, we had a whole bunch of malas that were purchased by our music teacher that we had in September for a week. Um, and so, you know, I, I know he's going to do a great job, because he can play piano. Um, he can, he can play, he plays piano, you know, regularly. Uh, he also plays trombone, trumpet, clarinet. Uh, and so he's going to be teaching all of the instruments that we are offering.
You had me at recorder, I just think that, um, I think it may have been an issue with the community member. He, the same community member also said that, um, you were painting outside of the school purple and orange.
Well, it's not even properly the truth.
You know. So just clarifying, did Ms. Hanson already resign? Or there's going to be time where she's here, and then Mr. Bullock takes over, like, what's the plan now?
Your store. Uh, I can let you know that, uh, Mr. Bullock and Ms. Hanson taught music together on Friday-
Okay.
-of last week. And so Mr. Bullock volunteered his day-
Okay.
Um, on Friday, and Ms. Hanson was teaching. And so she closed her classes at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, she did, she had, it was, um, you know, she, she met all her classes, spoke with them.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, Mr. Bullock was there as well, and they worked really nicely together, I thought. I think they did a great job in the concert.
Yeah, that's why I was surprised, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Can I just say one more thing in light of all of these? So there's been a lot of, um, I just want to say thank you to the teachers. Um, there's been the staff as a whole, there's been a lot of volatility everywhere, not just, um, the, what we've experienced in Ahon. And I, um, we all appreciate the, the teachers at, um, the Johnson School, uh, not just like hanging in with it, but being, you know, a part of making sure all the, all the pieces are working for all of our kids. And I, um, I hear different names, you know, of different staff members that are pitching in and doing different things, and, and my kids were talking, um, last week about, I said, well, who's doing gym right now, and they're like, Ms. Martino. And I said, well, who's helping out with this thing, and they're like, Ms. Martino. That would be Ms. Martino. I said, I said, so I'm like, I'm like, who's helping the new artist in residence? I'm like, is that Ms. Martino? It's me. And, uh, and, uh, it was just, it was, uh, they were just saying, Ms. Martino. And, and I know there are other teachers too, so I, you know, I want to say, but I, I, I do, I, um, I am often kind of floored by how much, um, um, all of you, and certainly just Martino pull off. Um, so I just want to say thank you for all of that.
It's the truth, it really, um, ma- makes it work, makes it work.
I'm sure, then I know.
Madam Chair, uh, one more brief, uh, uh, announcement. But before I do, I want to, uh, thank the members of the school committee for all their support during these, uh, difficult personnel times. It, um, it has been a, a challenge to, to be sure, and I'm sure, um, I'm confident that, uh, the, you're probably experiencing this in your own professional lives too. Uh, I was speaking to one of my colleagues in an urban district. Uh, she was telling me that sixteen of her classroom teachers have left since September to take better-paying jobs in another district. And, um, I'm old-school. Uh, whenever that's going to happen, uh, first of all, you try not to have it happen, but when you do, you make sure to contact the, the superintendent or principal-to-principal contact is made, and, um, an explanation is given. And I can assure you that I do that all the time, one hundred percent of the time. I make sure that I contact anyone that we're taking a staff member from at any time, uh, actually, the, the magic date is after August first. Uh, and that's just, uh, a minimum expectation, I think, for a professional superintendent. So, and the last thing I, uh, I want to tell you is that, uh, you authorized me to pay substitutes, uh, what I had to pay to get them. And I want you to know that our minimum is now ninety dollars a day, uh, and that meets the, the fifteen-dollar-per-hour state minimum, um, which eighty-five dollars fell a little bit short of. So, uh, I will be instituting that, um, ASAP.
And related to that, Superintendent Parentozzi, just, uh, if I can share that we did, uh, bring on a new substitute teacher. Um, she's here, uh, and she's working all this week. Uh, and so it's, it's been really helpful as we're trying to backfill, um, some preschool positions. We haven't really had, I can't really say we've had shortages since the new year. Uh, we've had everything filled. And the shortage that we have is a senior, uh, who couldn't be at college studying education.
Great.
Yeah, and I'm interviewing another one this week that is, uh, uh, was a firefighter, uh, a pilot. And I said, I emailed him, I said, are you interested in this position? And, uh, he said yes. And so we're going to meet, and I'm, I'm not sure if he's going to come on board, but, uh, our current, uh, uh, substitute teacher is going back to school in a couple of weeks. But she'll be available again when she's back home in, uh, Kibbe D. Um, but, uh, she's been wonderful, uh, Julia O'Neill. So we have a substitute teacher.
So is that all of our personnel up there?
Fortunately, it is.
Moving on to old business.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, in your packet, you have the third draft of the superintendent's budget, which, um, looks surprisingly identical to the second draft, because it is. The typical increases in, uh, that I'm planning for from fiscal, from fiscal twenty-two to twenty-three are in the, uh, two, two-and-a-half, three percent, depending upon what we're talking about. The exception would be, um, contracts that we don't have and unforeseen elements. And as you know, special education is one of those big ones. So, uh, there's increases in both, um, tuitions to, uh, private school that are significant, and there's also increases in special education out of district transportation, because, um, um, the next agenda item will inform you, and I might as well do it right now, since it makes sense, that the, um, the con- the bids will be opening on January sixteenth. If you remember, I rejected the bids the first time we went out for, uh, the out-of-district transportation service, because, uh, it would have increased our expenditures about two-and-a-half times, uh, which obviously I'm trying to avoid at all costs. So, um, that explains why this budget is up four-point-eight percent, which is the highest increase of a, a budget that I've ever, uh, asked you to consider. Now, after January sixteenth, if we get a more favorable out-of-district transportation, um, budget bid, that may come down a bit, but I don't foresee it coming down dramatically.
Okay.
Mr. Parentozzi, I have a question for you, um, and I, I apologize that I've asked this before, and I cannot remember. But for special education budget, um, when the district is reimbursed by DESI, um, is that accounted for in the budget? Or is that something that we don't count on, per se, um, as funding?
I account for it in the budget.
Okay.
The actual costs are, exceed the number I asked for in the general budget, because I know I could supplement the cost with the reimbursement.
Okay.
So, uh, just as, um, just to make sure we're all on the same page, we get reimbursed some percentage, somewhere around sixty-five to seventy-five percent, that's, and that's set late every year for expenditures in excess of forty-seven thousand dollars per student. This will be the first time, uh, fiscal twenty-two will be the first time we get reimbursed for transportation costs. Um, we're not even sure how that's going to work or what it's going to look like. We don't know if they're going to reimburse us a certain percentage of all the out-of-district transportation, or if the district has this, has to pay, uh, like the out-of-district tuition, the first X dollars, and then get reimbursed above that. We, we don't know yet, so that's, that's a, that's an unknown. So yes, we do have, uh, and that's called Circuit Breaker. We do have Circuit Breaker funds that we are earning right now. Unfortunately, there's two ways of looking at it. Our Circuit Breaker funds have been dramatically reduced over the last five years, because we've had fewer and fewer kids going to out-of-district services. So that's good on a, a variety of reasons. But now that we're in the opposite trend, it's a negative, because we don't have a lot of money in the Circuit Breaker account. And the Circuit Breaker money has to be spent within two fiscal years of it being sent by the DESE. And it can be spent only for special education services and costs. I hope that helps.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're very welcome. So on January sixteenth, I'll open up the bid. Uh, I do have a meeting, uh, later this week with one of the individual companies that wants to, um, put a bid in, and they want to, uh, speak with me. Frankly, I don't know what about, but anything I can do to, to get good bids, I'll do it. And then Madam Chair- And then Madam Chair, seven C, the lead pant, paint testing, um, as just an update. I've asked the company to bifurcate their cost. Al- almost, um, the majority of the cost of the, the letting is for outdoor work. Which, in my opinion, they can't do now anyway because it involves painting. So what I've asked the company to do is give me two different numbers, one for indoor work, which we have one small area that needs to be done. And then this summer, um, do the deletting on the outside of the building. Um, a lot of it is like exterior window sills, the lolly columns in the back of the gym in the, uh, you know, that, that entry that is off of the gym. You know, it's not really in areas where children spend time, which is, which is good. So, um, as soon as I, I get that company to respond, I will, um, get the delet, deletting on the inside of the building started.
Moving on to new business.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, members of the school committee, the chair is aware that I received communication this very day from, uh, Deborah Warren and Barbara Beatty about setting a meeting with the finance committee for March second. Um, I believe that's a Thursday evening. And, uh, I believe Ms. Warren was at our meeting earlier. I'm not sure if she still is. Mr. Andrews, can you see, uh, let me see if what I can do here.
She is, uh, yeah, she's on and her microphone is on.
Yep. Can you hear me? I don't see myself. I'm here.
Uh, yes, we can, we can hear you, uh, clearly, Ms. Warren.
Yep. Okay. Well, I'm glad to be here and, um, as liaison, I'm happy to, um, you know, be a go between or, or whatever.
Well, thank you for all your support.
Well, you're an easy group to support.
So Madam Chair, uh, with the school committee's permission, um, I will send the, uh, finance committee liaisons a copy of the third draft of the superintendent's budget, you know, of recognizing and with them recognizing that it's not a final product. Just so they have it. I will also send one to the town administrator and to the financial director of the town.
Excellent. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Parentozzi, um, where, where does March second fall in your timeline? I was trying to find a copy of the, the timeline that we were gonna you know, for the budget.
It, it falls appropriately after the school committee has its hearing and votes the budget.
And that's usually what we meet with them is after we vote the budget.
Yes. Yeah, un- unlike any other department budget, uh, Mass Emerald Law does not allow the finance committee to amend it. They, they have the right to support it or not support it. And obviously, it's my obligation and along with any members of the school committee who wish to, um, join me is to go to the finance committee meeting and ask, answer any of their questions so that they feel, hopefully, feel very comfortable supporting, uh, our budget. Uh, the finance, since I've been superintendent, the finance committee has been amazingly supportive of all of the budgets that, uh, members of the school committee have approved. And I am hopeful that that will continue. Um, they do ask very poignant and important questions. And, uh, I, uh, I study up before that evening to make sure that I can answer them all. And, uh, Madam Chair, through you, um, any members of your school committee, of the, the schools of committee, excuse me, are invited to attend, uh, the only, uh, thing that, uh, the members of the school committee have to remember is if, uh, more than two attend, then I have, we have to make sure we post it as a school committee meeting. Cause, uh, a- any meeting where a majority of the members of the school committee attend is, uh, de facto a school committee meeting.
And is it over, is the meeting over Zoom or in person and what time?
Uh, I don't know the time. Uh, Ms. Warren and Ms. Beatty have not indicated what time typically we go first at seven. I believe, and it is, um, both on Zoom and, um, in person.
Um, if I may, our meetings start at six thirty. And as far as I know for that night, you are the only show
No, thanks. Okay.
in town. So, um, that's what I can tell you.
Thank you so much.
Do you need the town hall?
At the town hall or in Zoom?
Yeah, it's in, uh, the conference room on the first floor, town hall.
Yeah, usually I believe.
Typically. Which is good because those rooms, you can actually hear something unlike the big room upstairs. So Madam Chair, um, my, my agenda item A day has been appropriately and gladly stolen by the communications of the day.
So I guess the question is, do we make the March second meeting a stampede meeting if more than two people want to attend? I think that's my way. So Tony, can we please add this to the next agenda?
I'm sorry.
Um, could we please add, um, this meeting to the next agenda so that we can look at our schedules?
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course.
Like, if we can keep it on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can discuss if we're gonna make it an official school committee meeting, depending on how many people can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I apologize. Uh, it's a little difficult for me to hear.
I know. It's me.
Well, uh, you for- don't forget how old my hearing is.
Oh, stop. Uh, so moving on to item nine, other committee business. Anyone have?
I have none. I've done none. Nope. None.
Any announcements?
None. I mean, no, 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 no.
I have, I just have one announcement I've got to make in my report, and that is that I've gotten feedback from the NTA on the teacher satisfaction questionnaire that we've been working on. And so I hope to have, I think it's possible I could have, I, I know that the, the survey will go out before the next meeting.
Oh, great.
And, um, I may have results by then as well.
Great. Thank you.
So I just wanted to give you an update on that. We got feedback from teachers. It was very helpful, uh, feedback. And I was, I was happy to see that, you know, I got some, a bunch of questions off the internet and I tried, Tony and I tried to reduce the number of questions that it was. And then the teachers went ahead and tried to put a positive spin on some of the questions that were negative. Um, that they just had that, but that was how they got them from the end. I got them from the internet that way. And it was, it was nice to, to hear. That's a nice way to start. So, so we'll see how, uh, we'll see how that goes. And, um, and teachers will have the option to be anonymous on the survey. And I'll work with the NTA on distilling the results.
That's great. And we really appreciate feedback, uh, from everybody so that we can make our school better.
Absolutely. As do I. As do I.
Is it teachers and staff? Or just teachers at this point?
Uh, currently it's, it's teachers and, and most of the, yeah, currently it's, um, teachers.
Question, they're directed to teachers. Okay. Wonderful. Well, if there's no other announcements, someone would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting and move into executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-two PM and move into executive session. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, the, uh, the motion at the bottom of the agenda needs to be read into the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just the first. The entire budget, so I'll make a motion. Okay.
Also not through, not reconvene.
I'm sorry. Yes, for that. I'm, uh, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-three. And move into, enter into executive session, not to reconvene, to open session for two reasons, the approval of executive session minutes from, uh, January third, two thousand and twenty-three and to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than physical professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If we can ask those that are part of this meeting to see, um, the meeting, it'd be greatly appreciated that aren't part of executive session.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey guys.
Speaker message for six one seven.
Kevin, I think you're on mute. I don't know if you know that.
Yeah, thanks. I, I did. Uh, and, um, appreciate you mentioning it anyhow. I'm also off camera. Um, Tim, uh, so I'm gonna stick around here, side, side computer, just so that we're comfortable with who's in the meeting. And they're all still chatting. They don't realize that we're off mute yet.
Oh, sorry. No, we're talking about nothing.
That's okay. I'm just letting you know. Yes, that's okay.
Is there a way we can get rid of the side to make them bigger so we can see better?
I think though we want to keep it open just in case if somebody's. Nobody else has joined in.
And you can. They can't answer without, if they keep somebody enters.
And I also need to stop the recording.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh.
And I'm trying to claim the host, but it's, it's asking me for my, I'm, I'm, I think it's asking me for the district and for the town sign in. We are recording. Yeah, we are recording and.
Tony, do you know who's the host?
Kristen Taylor, I would imagine.
Yeah. Um.
But when I used to do the meetings when we were remote and, uh, we were using the town hall link, I could stop the recording. And I could mute people and.
Did you, did you create the new, making the host? I don't know. Still want to.
No.
Well, you know, it might be the easiest thing is to, does it need to be this link? I mean, can I send people a Google Meet link?
Yeah. Are we muted still? Can you ask?
No, we're not muted.
Yeah, can we, yeah. Can we just send it?
I mean, I've got, I've got Zoom, I've got a whole Zoom contract that can just send people on a Zoom link right now. You won't get it.
Would you, would you learn?
It's gonna be for my work email. Is that okay? Any problems with that?
Hi.
No. Then we won't get, you know, Zoom only gives you forty-five unless.
Well, Google Meet is the.
Uh, uh, this, I don't know.
Oh, I have Google Meet. Um, is that, do you guys care?
Oh, do they need Google? We need Google. Are they on Google Meet now? Yeah, like, oh, it's.
No, we don't have to provide the link to, this is not a public.
It's not.
No. So can I just email everybody?
Well.
Oh, so he's gonna do a Google Meet. Okay. Can we see everybody on Google?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was just one at a time. No, you can see everybody. Okay. All right, great. So just.
Tim, can I have your email address?
Uh, yeah, T Z E S S I N at K dash P law dot com.
Okay. And, um, Michael?
It's, uh, excuse me, M L O N G at long, that's L O N G dash law dot com.
And, uh, Tony, I'm gonna use T Parentozzi at JohnsonSchool.org.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So you should have just gotten an email invite to, uh, this Google Meet meeting.
So we should leave this meeting, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm leaving.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
See you soon. No, I'm still on it in case those guys are still here and they don't know how to do it, right?
Oh, can you be on both at the same time?
Well, actually they already left, so that's good. It's fine.